The American City Council meeting for August 20th, 2019 will now be sectioned. John believes in the pledge of...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What does it look like?
Mayor Flores.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edge.
Here.
Councilmember De Vries. Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. Unfortunately, as we get older, we have to go away and we have lost a couple of our upstanding citizens in the county. And also, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the city employees and residents of Gilroy that are affected by the Gilroy Garden Festival incident. Also, Robert Bichard, former superintendent of schools for San Benito County, and Robert Scatini, a former deputy county sheriff and marshal. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now we'll move on to public comments. These are comments on Sunday, not on the agenda.
Anne Bridge.
Good evening, council members. I just wanted to inform you of the meeting I had this morning with the Board of Supervisors, where they issued us a proclamation in honor of our 150th anniversary. And the paperwork is to follow. They didn't hand it to me there, but it seemed to be well received. And I invited everybody to come on the 7th of September and join in the festivities, take part in it. I also informed them of some of our dignitaries that are going to be taking part in the parade, like Anthony Battello, our supervisor from our district, Robert Rivas, our assemblyman, and our state senator Anna Caballero. So that's about all I have to tell you. Everybody was really happy and looking forward to our big day of party.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are Jerry Lommy?
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
And city council members. My name is Saw Jerry Lommy. I'm the executive director of West Coast Farmers Markets. I've been working with your mayor in the effort to bring a certified farmer's market to San Juan Batista. The idea would be to have a Sunday market on Sundays that there are no large events in town, so we don't want to step on any toes of anything that's been going on. We're looking to host this on Mariposa between 2nd and 3rd, and we're looking at Sundays from like 10 to 3:00. I believe that with... I run about a dozen farmer's markets currently. They're all certified farmer's markets. I'm in Carmel Valley, Cupertino, Salinas, Foster City, and I'm up and down the Bay Area quite a bit. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer them. I look forward to working primarily with local vendors. I just was referred to a local barbecue person, and I'm looking to try to get other merchants and local people involved. But we bring certified organic fruits and vegetables from Watsonville all the way to Fremont, Fresno, throughout the area. If you ever get a chance to come out and see my Cupertino market on Sundays, we've got about 150 tents, 7,000 to 8,000 people that come through. Nothing like your rib cook-off that I saw. That was pretty impressive. But I think we can do a really, really good job, and I look forward to bringing a very successful farmer's market to town, given the opportunity. My next step would be approval from the city council and getting a letter so I could go obtain the necessary permits in Hollister with the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Health. If there's any questions, I passed out some business cards, and I would love to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jerry? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Do you have a card?
I do. Yeah, I'm looking for any local vendors that would like to be involved. Thanks.
Joni Cosio?
Wow, a certified farmer's market. Wouldn't that be great for this city? Talk about lifting your spirits. That would be good. Needed that for a long time. This afternoon, I wrote an email to the city manager about something that is on your agenda, but the take I have on it is just slightly different, so I think it doesn't quite fit under your agenda item, so I just wanted to read this real quick. This is what I wrote to Dawn this afternoon. "I saw as I was reading the packet for tonight's meetings that awarding a contract to Granite Rock for speed tables on 4th Street is on the agenda. That should help with safety on 4th Street, and I'm glad to see it on the agenda. I just wanted to also mention that in May of 2016, a donation of $4,000 was given to the city of San Juan Batista by Habitat for Humanity for two raised crosswalks for schoolchildren, one on 3rd Street and one on 4th Street, where the crossing guard works during the school year. Roger Grimsley was the city manager at that time, and he designed a very simple, attractive raised crosswalk with concrete pavers to fit in with the historical look of downtown. This money should still be in a marked account for this project, and if you do not have access to the design..." I'll give it to Dawn tonight. I have it here. I have a copy of what Mr. Grimsley sketched out at the time. He thought the cost would only be about $2,000 for each 32-foot crosswalk. I realize the cost may be underestimated because we were expecting the now-defunct local Habitat for Humanity to provide some volunteers to assist with the labor. I just wanted to bring this up while the council is considering the speed tables on 4th Street, because I think these projects could possibly be tied in together." And the other thing I wanted to mention is fire protection. I am 100% for, you know, cutting a 20-foot wide swath or whatever you need to near your house or near your fences, and I'm 100% for getting rid of dead trees and weeds on your lot that are dried up and need to go. I want fire protection, but I want the fire department to stay aware of erosion issues and native plant and animal life when working on hillsides like the one across the street from me. We have foxes, deer, salamanders, raccoons, birds, even a roadrunner or two that will be affected by denuding the hillsides. Of course, I want weeds and dead trees controlled on city lots, but please keep in mind, when clearing hillsides, that native plants and animals and erosion are all important issues also. That's all I've got tonight, so have a good meeting, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
That's it? All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent items. Now, all matters listed on the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless requested by a member of the city council staff member or a citizen.
I'd like to pull 4E.
Pull... 4D?
4E.
4E. Okay. There's also an addition. We're going to be adding on the presentations on 4 after 4H. We're going to add HI, and it'll be a report from the sheriffs. We're going to move that from the discussion items on 6C. Now it becomes I, 4I.
Excuse me, it was 3E on the consent item I wanted to...
3E?
Yeah, 3E.
Uh-huh.
I'm done.
That's okay. All right. A, approve affidavit of posting agenda. Approve minutes of May 21st, regular meeting. Approve minutes of May 24th, special meeting. Recommendation of appointment of Ramona Hill Strategic Plan Committee. Adopt ordinance 201904, amending Section 1102-050 of the San Juan Batista Municipal Code to allow cannabis facilities in industrial zoning district by conditional use permit, exempt from CQ guidelines, Sections 15061 and 15378. Second reading. And G, waive reading of ordinance and resolutions of tonight's agenda beyond title. Okay. We need to entertain a motion to accept the consent items, approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve all matters listed under the consent agenda, that they be enacted by one motion authorizing the actions indicated for those items so designated.
Except for E.
Except for E, with the exception of E.
Except for E. Do we have a...
I'll second it.
All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now shall we deal with the 3E?
I'm actually all in favor of 3E. I just wanted to speak a little bit about it. You know, Vertigo is coming up on the lawn. One of the things, and I've been trying to figure out in my mind for a long time, and I'm not really... It doesn't click with me, but we should take a bigger advantage of the movie Vertigo. It is listed under the American Film Institute as one of the 10 best movies ever made, period. Stars Kim Novak and Jimmy Stewart, and a third of the movie is shot in San Juan, and the other 2/3 are shot in San Francisco, so we know both places pretty well. And it's a great movie, and we have a coffee shop named after it, but that's kind of all we really do, and I'd like to see us... Maybe not the city, but somebody take a little bit of advantage of it and promote it a little bit more. Other than that, I'm completely in favor of it, so don't do...
Don't we do something that whole day? Isn't there a historic walk or something?
Yeah, there is, there is.
Associated with it?
There is.
Well, we can get Seemup to come and film the whole thing, and then we run it next year.
Good idea.
Okay.
And while we're talking about 4E, I just had a question on...
3E.
3E. Did I say 4? I apologize. 3E. The volunteer group, the Brown Beret Group, who are they?
Who are they?
Yeah. I've not ever heard of them.
Well, the Brown... Bring you back... The Brown Beret started way back...
The Red Berets.
You know, when we were...
The Green Berets.
When we were organizing the Latino community. Okay, these are youngsters. Most of these youngsters are from Watsonville. Most of them are first generation USA, and they're just looking out for their community, especially in the areas where you have a lot of violence. They kind of get in there and try to keep, you know, the peace. That's what they are. They were Brown Berets.
So what training do they have?
I have no idea. What training they're getting now, I'll tell you the training we had, but that's...
And what are they doing for patrolling the crowd? I just didn't understand any of that.
I don't have the answers for you. They have to come from the organizers.
And we just happen to have the organizer here?
We just happen to have the organizers sitting right here.
Please enlighten.
Good evening. I'm Ramona Hill, resident here and family director of Credo Studio, and I'm on that mandala committee. The recommendation to use the Brown Berets came from Grace Nutter. She's another member of this committee. What we have been informed of is basically that we need to have the road closures secured, that we need to make sure there is no danger from vehicles. This will just be between 3rd Street and 4th Street on Polk, so right out there by Fool's Gold and the bakery. We've downsized quite a bit from our bigger dream, which will be, you know, actually we hope that this will become San Juan Day for us, you know. But so that, as far... Yeah, and I'm sorry I don't have answers to the question about their training. I can get that to you. I can find out about that and make sure that, you know, that I know what that is. But I'm not considering them professional security. I'm considering them, you know, volunteers that will kind of man the closures at each end. This will be a crowd of, we're not even expecting 250 people, you know.
What about the barriers that we put across the street? That's standard, huh?
Well, it is. What I've heard, exactly. But I, you know, I've... The question has come, what are we doing for security? As far as, again, especially I guess in light of recent events, and we're still working on organization, and maybe there does need to actually be hired security. This is kind of new, right? I mean, for these very large fairs, I'm assuming that security is all there and all managed, but this is a very small community block party.
So what can you tell us about the Brown Beret? Because from when I remember the Brown Beret, it was real different from what your...
I'm going to have to get something to you. Yeah, like I said, I don't know that much. What the mayor just said is more than I even knew. So what I know is that they'll volunteer and that they will help.
They're basically a local group working out of Watsonville. That's where, you know, they're stationed, and they're trying to, you know, keep the violence down in the community, and it's their, you know, their eyes. And they're in contact with law enforcement and all that.
They're organized.
Yes.
They're a legitimate organization. I'm sure they have training. I just can't, I can't speak to it.
That's why I'm...
So I said, the question begs, back to my question, what are they doing? It says, "We'll patrol the crowd and provide crossing," and I get the whole crossing thing. There were incidences during the antique fair where people blew through the barricades. But perhaps this is a question for Todd, does this suffice for the sign-off for security?
Let me go ahead and I'll just give a quick gander at it best I can. Mr. Mayor, to your question, to Councilmember Jordan, this event is in my list, and we are scheduled for my upcoming meeting, which is scheduled for September 5th. And also, I did reach out to one of the members involved, one of Ramona's, you know, associates, that's Jennifer, and just asked if we could just have a sit-down and just go through this event. This is the upcoming mandala that's coming up. So anyway, that question can come up and just, you know, address the security concern.
Okay. Thank you.
One last thing, if you'd like to just ask, give me one again. So Jennifer Colby and Grace Nutter and I are meeting tomorrow night, and that I will make sure that this is, you know, that this is discussed, and that I have something to you out of that meeting.
Yeah, you can provide that information to Todd.
Yes.
Okay? Please, you'll get it to us.
Thank you very much.
All right. We shall move on now to presentations.
We need to approve E.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to...
I move to approve E. 3E.
Do we have a second?
I have comment.
Well, you can... We're going to need a second before we move on. There are no comments?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second now, we can go comments.
I'd like to amend that and approve the resolution for street closures for Vertigos and hold off on the Ag Festival until we hear more about the security component.
When is the, when is the street party?
What's the date?
The Mandela.
September 27.
What's the date of the next city council meeting? 17th.
Yeah, we got time.
Okay.
We got time? Okay, so...
Yeah.
Do we need a action, I mean, a motion on that, or...
Well, for, I guess for street closures, it's fine. I can go ahead and pull that, because it's just for street closures, but I do have a question on security.
Okay. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Can I have, ask a question?
Sure.
To our attorney, if there should be an incident downtown and the Brown Beret is involved, if it's negative, can anything come back on the city? Are we responsible? That's what I'm getting at.
Well, you have special event permit. You have special event insurance. Is that right? So to the extent that it's something that's insurable, then you have, you know, be covered under the special event insurance.
Okay.
So I can't really speak to if we come back on you for approving it, but you are covered by insurance.
Okay.
Because that insurance also covers the city.
Okay.
It's supposed to, anyway. All right.
You need a motion to approve half of it or partially.
No, I took mine back, because this only deals with, 3E only deals with the street closures.
Then you need a vote.
Right, we still need a vote.
Okay, we need a motion on...
I move that we approve 3E, Vertigo on the lawn, and Autumn Art and Ag Festival.
Street closures.
Street closures.
Street closures, yeah.
And now second.
Okay, a second, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. All right, we should move on to presentation, informational items, and reports. First of all, I'd like to recognize the green businesses in San Juan Batista. City of San Juan Batista's Certificate of Achievement presented to Lola as a certified green business. Thank you for contributions to the economic vitality of our community and the health of our environment, presented this 20th day of August, 2019. Who's here to receive it?
Lola. Lola herself.
It's a certificate of achievement in Janet's Top Rock Shop. Anybody here presents?
Oh, where's Kami?
Another certificate of achievement...
Yay for Kami.
Presented to Vito Studio. Another certificate of achievement presented to Body Mechanics Masai Studio. Anybody here for Body Mechanics?
Way to go, Marisa.
We have a certificate of achievement presented to Margot's Ice Cream Parlor.
Yay, Margot.
And I guess Janet gets her beer.
Yay, well done, all.
Thank you so much.
Set in that example.
We're starting this whole thing by, well, sorry Laura, but we no longer have our plastic bottles.
One glass metal bottle at a time.
Well, we're making it, you know, step by step. Well, they will get there eventually. You know, I'd like to see the whole town go.
Yeah.
We got sad, we can get power. Anyway, and then we're ready.
Yep, absolutely. We'll talk about that.
Okay, I do have a proclamation for Gavion Solis, celebrating 100 years. And here's the proclamation. How many of you guys hear about it? Whereas in 1919, San Benito High School added college courses to its curriculum, thereby forming San Benito Junior College. And whereas San Benito Junior College provided higher education and career training to the residents of Hollister for many years, providing them with pathways to law enforcement, aviation, healthcare, and the arts. Of course, they should have added San Juan Batista there, but that's all right. Whereas in 1963, San Benito High School District joined with Morgan Hill Unified School District and Gilroy Unified School District to form the Gavilan Joint Community College District. Whereas our district has grown to include a campus in Gilroy, satellite sites in Morgan Hill and Hollister, instructional locations in San Martín and Coyote Valley, and is planning construction of a campus in San Benito County soon. And whereas Gavilan College now enrolls over 10,000 students per year, and whereas Gavilan College offers programs of instruction leading to associates in arts and associate in science degrees and associate degrees of transfer, and whereas Gavilan College offers career education, law enforcement, healthcare, computer technology, digital media, cosmetology, construction, and child development, leading to certificates and careers. And whereas Gavilan College alumni are leaders in local government, small businesses, education, public service, healthcare, the arts, and contributing to every career field they have entered, and whereas Gavilan College is a leading employer that contributes millions of dollars each year to our local economy, and whereas Gavilan College has invited every member of our local communities to celebrate the occasion of centennial and to participate in the many activities planned to commemorate this milestone over the course of the year. Now therefore, the city councils of Juan Batista congratulate Gavilan College and the Gavilan Joint Community College District on the anniversary of the centennial, and express our best wishes and hope for college continued success. Signed by Seth Claus, Mayor.
Yay, Gavilan College.
Excuse me, Mayor, and council members. We received a request by Recology or the...
San Benito County Integrated Waste Management.
To provide you with more information about green businesses. Can we, can they give you a short presentation now or very soon?
Sure, do it right now, sure. No problem.
Thank you. I think you have a PowerPoint that was handed out.
Is there anybody to look at that Gavilan College thing?
Eight slides.
No, no, I just read it so... But this is going... I just wanted to read it because I'm going to present it at their ceremony. They have a ceremony on Friday, I think. Yeah, well, I'm supposed to be there, and I'm going to present it there. Okay? Go.
So, hi, everyone. This was prepared, my presentation, for, before the recognition, but so we might be a little redundant. My name is Selena. For those of you that don't know me, I am the Recycling and Green Business Coordinator for San Benito County. On behalf of San Benito County Integrated Waste Management and the city of San Juan Batista, we want to recognize all of our certified San Juan Batista green businesses tonight. Before we call out each, well, we already recalled out each business, I want to share a little bit more about the program and the outstanding support from the San Juan Batista community. The California Green Business Network and statewide programs are funded by state grants and made possible thanks to a coalition of cities and counties that provides small and medium-sized businesses with technical support to help them implement sustainable business practices and reduce our operating costs. It has been a year since our revived local green business program, and we've seen tremendous support and interest across the county, but especially here. Aside from our support and resources, additional technical support, free equipment and resources to businesses are made possible thanks to program partners, including Recology, Ecology Action, Water Resources Association of San Benito County, and the San Benito County Chamber of Commerce. Other benefits to businesses that join the program include free recognition and promotion at the state and local level. Also, by implementing green business practices, businesses will see increased employee health and wellness and productivity. Green business practices are not only good for the environment, but also for the business's bottom line. By lowering their operating costs through water, energy, and waste reductions and efficiency, they save money and simultaneously contribute to healthier communities. Businesses save money further by having access to rebates and resources that we provide them, such as our $500 reimbursable green business grant, which a lot of the businesses here have taken advantage of. Green businesses also attract more customers because more and more consumers are looking to shop sustainably. Overall, it has been an awesome experience to work with the business community here. Every single business owner and manager has been engaged, thoughtful, and so very easy to work with. The community as a whole continues to be engaged and show great enthusiasm for green efforts. In partnership with the San Benito County Chamber, San Benito County Chamber of Commerce, we have hosted both of our green business mixers here in San Juan Batista, one at Hardin's in San Juan, De San Juan in January, and the other at St. Francis Retreat Center this past July. We saw record-high attendance at both of these events as far as chamber mixers go, and see increased enthusiasm for this program and our green businesses each time. So we want to give a special thanks to the elected officials who attended our last green business mixer, Councilman John Freeman. business mixer, Councilman John Freeman, Councilmember Leslie Jordan, Mayor Cesar Flores, and Councilmember Mariage. Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce Robbie Brown, our Green Business Specialist, who provides our businesses with step-to-step, step-by-step support and walks them through the program through its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robbie. As she stated, I'm the Green Business Specialist for San Benito County. Just to quickly recap some of the things she said and a few new things I'd like to add, I just wanted to quickly thank everyone again for your support for our green business mixer. If I'm not mistaken, we had around 100 attendees, which is pretty significant. Yeah, out of the 12 certified green businesses that we recognized, five of them were, as we all know, San Juan Batista businesses. So a quick thank you to all of you, the businesses here, for your ambition. Without your devotion and enthusiasm, excuse me, this program wouldn't have had such a great kickstart. So as she stated, our program offers technical assistance and consultation. We're a little bit more of a holistic approach, so we work with looking at people's energy consumption, water consumption, pollution prevention, sustainable transportation, and waste management. And not to mention, this program is free, so that's a great incentive. And I'd also like to recognize some businesses are working for their certification in San Juan Batista. So we have Hardin's, St. Francis Retreat, Tools for Change Africa, Family Threads, and Daisy's Saloon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, the local LULAC council has selected two women to honor as Women of the Year. And one of them happens to be a resident up in the canyon, so she's from San Juan Batista, Shirley Trevino. And here, I would be presenting these at the LULAC dinner they're having. And Elaine Suniga Clower is the other woman. So, you guys, just to let you know who they are, we'll be recognizing them at the dinner that they're having on Saturday.
Saturday.
What?
Saturday.
Saturday, yes. Okay. We have a, we had a request, and I can't recall the person that requested it, but they wanted us to declare that the month of August is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So we put out a proclamation. It's the City of San Juan Batista proclamation honoring Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Support Services and Declaration of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas each day, 42 children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer, and more than 40,000 children undergo treatment for cancer each year. And whereas cancer remains a leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined. And whereas families of children with cancer in the City of San Juan Batista receive essential services on Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Support Services, a local organization that has gained national awards and recognition for improving the quality of life for hundreds of local children with cancer and thousands of family members. And whereas Jacobs Heart holds the memories and honors the legacies of hundreds of children from our local community who have been lost to cancer, ensuring that their precious memories will never be forgotten. And whereas the Oncology Department of Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacobs Heart for the past 20 years as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, financial struggles of families of children with cancer in San Juan Batista. And where it is important for all San Juan Batista residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the lives of children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. And now therefore, I, Cesar Flores, Mayor of the City of San Juan Batista, do hereby declare September a Childhood Center Awareness Month in the City of San Juan Batista, and do hereby honor Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for 20 years of outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month honoring children with cancer in our community. Tip. Okay. Monthly financial report.
Item 4E is the monthly financial statements presented for the council's consideration. I don't have much to add to the numbers. Still becoming familiar with them, frankly. I can note that this is the year-end, so June 30th is the end of our fiscal year. And what it does is it helps us check the assumptions made back in April and May when we put our budget together versus the actual numbers that are coming in. And the revenues are down. The general fund is 89% of what we anticipated. Other fees are higher, but those are for special uses, so they're designated for special uses. It's a general fund that we want to make sure that we make our budget on in this fiscal year for sure. Well, on the good news, on the good side, the expenditures are 75% of what we anticipated. And that's good, saving about half a million dollars out of a one-point, out of a $2 million budget is a pretty good, pretty good way to do business. So the city did fairly well last year, saving much more than it brought in, which is why our reserves, especially in the general fund, are still at the $2 million mark. If the council has any specific questions about any of the warrants or anything like that, I'm happy to do my best to respond for you.
Are there any questions? Do we need a motion or just accept the report?
Just please, yeah, accept and follow the report.
Okay, we'll accept the report. Now, we have reports from the City Council pointing to regional organizations and committees.
Okay.
Mayor Flores, City Manager's Report.
That's what I was expecting. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm not quite ready yet.
That's okay. It's also there, so I did have a chance, I did have the opportunity to write this out this month, so I appreciate that. It's a lot of detail. We are busy here at City Hall. A couple of things that are not clear in my report that I could supplement. We are working on our plastics ban, and I did pass a lot of information recently to the City Council on the progress of that. Thankful for the San Juan Committee for doing a survey for us and presenting those results to us in time for this meeting. If anyone's interested in seeing those, I'm happy to pass those on. Also, just an update, the Rancho Vista Development Agreement was to come back for second reading today, and we had a little bit of a confusion, but not a major blip, so it's going to come back in its entirety at the September meeting. We are proceeding to process the plan checks, so the project is moving forward. They raised a question that the City Attorney and I did not expect, and so we put a temporary pause on things. We've worked it out now, and we're good going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great.
Could you have some comment on this item?
Okay.
Tony Box, 707 Fourth Street. What I'm asking about is item six on City Manager's Report, the water. I remember about a year ago, Dan DeVries brought this up, and I have a filter filtering the water coming into my house, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. In fact, I put one on Don's desk today. It's absolutely black after 10 days. I want to know when that half a million dollar piece of equipment is going to be online and when we're going to start getting clean water in San Juan. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Tony. So I can respond. Do you mean the pellet plant or the other filter?
Well, the half a million dollar plant that we bought when Michelle was here.
The iron and...
There were four guys in white shirts out there today looking at it.
Okay, the iron and magnesium filter, okay.
I think that's what's causing the problem.
Yeah.
It is.
The city manager's going to address that.
Sure. The actual problem that we're facing, and I had a chance to talk to our water operator today because he agreed that the water has been a little worse, a lot worse, community-wide instead of just neighborhood by neighborhood. And I asked Clearwater, what's the deal with that? We're running more pressure through our pipes, and our pipes are old, and inside the pipes are rust, clusters of rust. And so as we begin to flush our lines and clean them up, or actually, it's getting worse before it's getting better. So that being said, we are starting, restarting, I should say, the flushing of the water lines, which is something we hadn't done for quite a while. So the only way to prevent this in the future is to replace the lines and then flush the lines that we have. So the fact that we're paying closer attention to them has temporarily caused the problem to be a little bit worse. That's what Danny Gonzalez shared with me this afternoon. The status of our well six and our filtration system, we hope to have the state president at our system for an interim plan and letter of operation next Friday. So it's a little late, but it's imminent. It's close to 10 days now away. So I was out there today, and that was the word on the status of that. And that's going to filter the iron coming from the well itself. So those are the things that we're doing, Mr. Box, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
We do have a sample of the pipes that are underground in his office. I mean, they're so corroded that they're popping holes all over the place, and we're getting leaks all over there.
But this thing has really gotten worse in the last year. I mean, really bad, to where it's like I have one of those reverse osmosis systems.
Right.
It just knocked that out, and it's $150 worth of filters right there. I won't put it back in until, and I know this, hopefully, this piece of equipment is going to take the rust, or I'm sorry, not rust, iron out of the water.
Yeah.
Is going to help. But I don't know, guys. With all these new homes coming on, I hope they all got filters on them, or you're going to have a bunch of people in here screaming at you about their brown water.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Can we get a, something up on the website for when we're flushing to alert folks to potentially turn off their filters or not use water whilst the flushing is going on?
Yeah, that would be easy to do, Monday morning schedule type of thing for the week.
I noticed they were flushing yesterday. Yeah, Monday.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, yeah. Drove by on First Street, and there they were. Water coming out on, all across First Street.
Yeah, well, right. And that's finally doing our, exercising our standard operating procedures and taking the...
And it is a State Water Resource Control Board regulation to do, to flush mains, to have a mains flushing program. Are we doing it in conjunction with the fire department? Have you discussed it with them?
No, I haven't gotten to that level.
Just a question.
Just trying to restart it for now. And just to assure the community that we do test our water every week, and it is healthy to drink except for the lead, iron.
San Juan water.
San Juan water.
Straight out of the town.
Okay, yeah, it's just iron.
So, so I might add, there's, I might add that there's no MCL or maximum contaminant level for iron, so even though it looks ugly, it's safe to...
Leslie drinks it all the time.
All the time. Still got my hair, Tony. Most of it.
That it?
That's it.
Banker.
That's it.
Now, the reports on the City Council point to the different organizations and committees.
Okay, so last Wednesday night, Ambag met, and the discussion item was the sixth cycle for regional housing needs assessment. We also, the City of San Juan met last, a week ago Tuesday night, was it?
Right, yes.
Yeah, and that was for the fifth cycle. So as you can tell by the numbers, we're one behind, or at least kind of one behind. When they catch up, they catch up. So the good news is, is that the state is providing money for the planning of the sixth cycle for the regional housing needs assessment. And so San Juan Batista is scheduled, per our population, it's set in a table, we're going to receive $65,000 to plan for the new potential growth. I was told that if we farm it out to EMC again, the costs may or may not be that much money. Might be a little more, might be a little less, et cetera. There is, the Central Coast is now a mega region of COGS, okay? And that is made up of San Benito COG, Ambag, which is for the two counties of Monterey and Santa Cruz. It's also including the SLO COG, and it also is now including the Santa Barbara County COG. And so they're all going to be together in a mega region to make it easier for the state to deal with. And so they're, those, all those COGS are going to get together and nominate one of the COGS to be the kind of fiscal agent that doles out that money, you know, the $65,000 we're going to get, and Selena's is going to get 1.5 million or something. You know, it depends on your population. So Ambag is going to be the fiscal agent. So the Central Coast mega region's getting $6.5 million plus $2 million incentive, and I'm going to try and see if we can, for infrastructure grant planning, and so I'm going to try and see if we can get some of that money into San Juan, since I sit on the executive board of Ambag, not just the huge board, but the kind of five top dogs that do it. So I'm going to make sure that we get some of that $2 million, which is above and beyond the $65,000 I just talked about. That is it on Ambag. This very same night, though, and I drove quickly over, the San Benito County Health Foundation had their grand reopening. It wasn't, wasn't brand new, but it was rebuilt. And it was rebuilt by, with sustainability in mind, we've been kind of talking about this green business and such. They have become a very green business. They have solar panels on the roof to power the building, and they have, it's not a Tesla Power Wall, but it's a competitive product, batteries in the rear. So they can, they are now a microgrid. I've been talking about this a little bit, so here's a prime example of what a microgrid can do. So let's say PG&E shuts the power off for three days because of a wildfire in Fresno County or something. They can, they can continue on, they can see patients, they can do whatever they do. They have dental units back there, they have all kinds of things. They can continue to see patients, they can build, they can do everything because they have power, even if the rest of Hollister does not. So that's what a microgrid can do. And so my congratulations to this San Benito County Health Foundation.
Yeah, just to add to that, they can run full bore for a week after power's out.
Fully medical.
And fully medical, everything. And they are the first...
And only.
And only full self-contained green operation in the nation.
Oh, wow.
For that type of, for that type of...
For that type of thing.
Business, yes.
Jimmy Panetta made the remark that now he's got something else to put on those guys that we're ahead. Okay.
So, if I can speak now.
Yeah.
Just give my report. I went to the area agency for aging and...
I wasn't quite done yet.
Oh, you weren't, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Give me.
Well, he wanted to add, and so I, of course, let him, you know. So the intergovernmental meeting was scheduled to meet, but we didn't meet. The Monterey Bay Community Power Policy Board did not meet, but the Operations Board met, which Don can tell you about because he's on it now. Although I did meet with the CEO of Monterey Bay Community Power, and we talked about the potential of annexing Santa Barbara County into us, and that's because unbeknownst to me, cities and counties now have offices and officers and administrators called sustainability managers. We don't have one here in San Juan. And so they're basically begging and screaming and yelling to join a CCA because it's the way they meet their goals of CO2-free power. So these people are banging on the doors. California Public Utilities Commission is not letting new CCAs form for various reasons that you probably have to ask them about, but, so we're going to get bigger because of it. Now, I'm done.
Okay. And I'm going to keep my report really short. I went to the area agency for aging, and just to let everybody know that there's more of us living longer, and by, I believe it's 2035, there's just going to be a lot of seniors living. AARP did a presentation, and what they're doing is they're going throughout the country and the nation, making, doing communities, making them into age-friendly communities. And they integrate youth with seniors and young families. And you can receive funds from AARP will donate to your... And you you can receive funds from ARP will do, will donate to your area, and so it's it's a really big thing. And then in addition to that, we're doing a survey for seniors. Anybody over the age of sixty can fill out this survey, and I'm going to put some out on the counter, out in the foyer where Carmen sits. And if it's all right, I'm going to deliver some to the library. But it's really important that people fill these surveys out because that will determine how much funds we can get and all the help that we we do with the aging.
Those available online?
It is, and this is available online also.
Good. That it?
I went to a presentation put on by San Benito County Water District and on groundwater sustainability. And we're actually doing very well, very far ahead of mostly every other county in the state. San Benito has been working on our groundwater supply for about fifty years now. And so we're way ahead of the curve, and lucky for San Juan Batista, water flows downhill. We get their runoff, which adds to our aquifers. I also was at the San Benito County Water District's meeting, and nothing much new came of that. Just a reminder to all of our residents that there is a toilet exchange program, retrofitting for conservation. There are a lot of conservation programs out there that we, as San Juan residents, are not taking part of. And Sean Novak at the San Benito County Water Agency is heading all of that. So get in touch with Sean Novak.
I have a, just a little bit of information from COG. One of the items that we're discussing in COG is that Frasier Lake Airport. How many of you are aware that there's a new airport coming up? Not nobody? There's an airport that's being planned, I guess it would be west of the existing airport, and it's an airport that's going to provide for water landings. It's got a water strip where people land with airplanes, and then a regular strip. And it'll go into the whole process of contacting the owners of the properties and all that kind of stuff. The other thing that came up is that the item of on the one fifty-six twenty-five turnabout has been moved to the next meeting because there's still a lot of, a lot of stuff bubbling up through the soil, so we just went ahead and moved it for the next meeting. And that's about it. Any questions? Okay. Pardon?
When they're going to start one fifty-six?
That one fifty-six supposed, supposed to be starting twenty twenty, summer of twenty twenty? And should both to be finished by twenty twenty, July thirty, I believe. Yeah, I have, let's see.
The unfortunate part is Caltrans has a very poor record on keeping their their schedule.
I have a.
Oops, I didn't say that, did I?
Out loud.
They do, they do provide us with a project update sheet for the whole county, so let's see. Highway one fifty-six improvement project. It's in near San Juan Batista, from the Alameda to slightly east of Fourth Street. Construct a four-lane expressway. Summer twenty twenty and twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. The construction cost is fifty-seven point four million dollars. Funding source is TIP and local. The project manager is Brandy Ryder. And the project design continues with ninety-five percent completion, and all operations in the progress, that's, I guess, the property owners. Utility relocation, relocation design coordination underway. That is the status of one fifty-six. Okay, thank you. That's it. Now we go to Strategic Plan Committee.
Report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Good evening. Todd Kennedy, your city planner. I also serve as the secretary of Strategic Planning Committee. Since your last council meeting, we've had two meetings. We had a special meeting on July eighteenth, and then we had a regular scheduled meeting on August first. I'll just talk real quick about July eighteenth. Wasn't really, you know, a whole lot of big bullet points to talk about, other than a comment of the previous monologue that was taking place and the amount of people that showed up and how impressive it was. There's also some talk about the welcome packet and in the proper updates and so forth. But I'd like to go ahead and talk a bit about August first as well. Also, by the way, before I get into that, myself and council member John Freeman both serve on the Strategic Planning Committee, so we might both have comments. The Parks Master Plan was discussed and vetted out back on August first, and it should be before you pretty soon for review and comments. The maps of the open space document were organized and passed out. We actually drew in some areas of cultural walking tour and walking trail throughout town and as well as, you know, really to help commemorate the cultural heritage of the community. So the next item, though, is a International Charter of Compassion that was brought forward by one of our members on on the committee. And that's something that was passed to put on the council agenda, so that should be on one of the next agendas coming up. Before I conclude, though, I'd like to just say that the Parks Master Plan was passed by the Strategic Planning Committee with comments. So we'll just give it one more look, and then we should be ready to pass on to council. That's all I have tonight, myself or.
So I'd like to add that a really big thank you to to the subcommittee that did that master, Parks Master Plan. That's mainly Mandisa and Dr. Jennifer Colby, with some help from Bob Quaid and a few others. It's a lot of work. It's very important. We, there is a lot of grant money available for parks right now. We cannot get one dollar of that grant money until we have a master plan. So now we have one. It may or may not need tweaking. It may or may not need a little improving. But at least we have something to start with, or something to go with. And if we accept it at that point, we can then apply for grants to improve, A, the parks we have, and B, start on parks we don't have, or or whatever. The only other little thing I'd like to add is sometimes, particularly when people work really hard on their own thing, they kind of just kind of get a little tunnel focus, if you know what I mean. And so the Parks Master Plan is kind of stepping on the heels, or vice versa, of the Housing Master Plan because what they would like to do is make a park right across the street from Veruti Park at the, where the Corporation Yard is now, next to the community center. This has been talked about many, many years, many times over, you know, the history of San Juan. It makes sense because Corporation Yard is not very good-looking, and it'd be nice for aesthetic reasons to move it out someplace else. And the Housing Master Plan, I believe, where we plan on moving the Corporation Yard, or where the Parks people want to move the Corporation Yard, is where the housing people want to put low-income or moderate-income housing apartments or something like that. So obviously, two people cannot be in the same, two buildings cannot be in the same place at the same time, so we'll have to kind of figure that out. That's something the Planning Commission can probably do.
Some reconcile.
Yeah, but I think it's all, I think it's all good, and once we get it approved and in place, we can start getting some parks. We could get the dog park that everybody wants up there. We can get another park. We can get this park. This park will have, they have it planned to be a skateboard park and a half-court basketball and other places for youth groups to meet, like boy scouts, girl scouts, whatever. You know, it's right across the street from Veruti Park. Veruti Park works very well for little kids. But this park will be for, let's just say, older children, you know, that don't want to play on a swing set. So that's really about it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, now we come to the Sheriff's Report. We ask Sheriff Taylor to come over and give us a little bit of this wisdom about what we have to deal with.
So this is item six C.
It's, it's.
Six E.
Six E, C, but it's, we've moved it to.
Four I.
Four I. You missed that one, huh?
Just happened. Thank you, Mayor Flores. Now, I don't know if I'm going to be able to raise your expectations, but I'll go over a couple of things just to start, but I think the real reason for me to be here is to discuss some safety, maybe, events. But just to go over some of the bullet points from last month. So we had a sergeant's meeting where we where we really explained to our supervisors the importance of policing in this city in make sure, making sure that we're fulfilling our contractual obligation to the hours that we're supposed to be spending here. And so as a result of that meeting, we exceeded our hours in July, thankfully. Of the hundred and sixty-eight contracted hours, we were actually here for two hundred and two. That's outside of, you know, responding to other things outside of those hours, but at least for like extra patrols and area checks and things like that. We didn't have anything major i- in July here. But as everybody here that was here knows that the Fourth of July was very festive, and there was quite an aerial display of fireworks in the city. It was not city-sponsored.
No.
We can tell you who those people are.
I was here.
We got their address.
I was actually, I I was actually personally present here for almost the entire night between here and, which was an incredible display on Olympia. Let me tell you, it was amazing. Rivalled anything I've seen at a major league stadium. So, but I do want to thank Todd Kennedy for his role in in what we're doing, kind of. What is, I really appreciate is being invited to the table to discuss special events and kind of go over that process, and unless you were there for one of those. And I just think it's it's really nice for us, though, that we're not the decision-makers. It's good for us to be included in that conversation, so I really appreciate that partnership. I guess, for what it's worth, I think he's doing a fantastic job. The communication's outstanding. The the flow of communication back and forth is great. I feel included. I feel like our opinion is listened to, and it's just, I think, a really very much needed thing, especially if we want to continue here to host more events and larger events. It's it's been great. And I also want to thank you, Mayor Flores, and the City Manager Reynolds for reaching out and making a real effort to have good communication with me. I I've stood up in front of this council for, since I got here at the end of twenty fourteen, and begged for mercy many times because there's just one of me, and I run two divisions by myself, and I get spread thin, though I'm not thin, I get spread thin. And so sometimes things fall through the cracks. It's not from my intention, but just some things I gave the mayor. I'm happy to provide to any of the council members my my work cellphone number that I have with me twenty-four seven. So you're never bothering me. If you need something, stay on top of me and make sure you get what you need. To piggyback on one thing, it's not really my role, but just because I have a little bit of experience with it, because it came up earlier. Prior to working here, I did fifteen years of law enforcement in Watsonville, where we did have a lot of interaction with Brown Berets. I actually grew up and went to school with one of the founders of the Brown Berets, Louis Alejo, our former assemblyman. And I also know that our former Watsonville mayor, Oscar Rios, was also part of the Brown Berets back in ninety-four when it started. So for me, fifteen years of law enforcement in Watsonville, I would say that though they are a, really kind of a civil rights-minded organization, they were also a partner for us in many things. And I think that one of the most impactful things that they helped us with was under Chief Solano, we started a thing called the PIT Team, which was our post-incident team. If anybody's familiar with Watsonville, there's a lot of violence there, and when we would have violent events, the Brown Berets and Cis Cuarela and some other people in the community would come out with us to canvas neighborhoods, to generate leads, put people at ease. I would not personally, on the law enforcement side, look at them as security. I would look at them as observers. I would not recommend them taking the place of security guards or security, or think of them that way. But monitoring ingress and egress and being part of the solution, it's always good to have more witnesses and more eyes out there. And I think that if any of you have a good context still with with Louis Alejo, I know who's been in this very spot many times. He he still is very involved and probably has a good pulse on what's going on with the Brown Berets. One of the things they do there downtown is they have, they operate what's, I believe they still do, is what's called the bike shop. It's a place for young kids to go and really wrench on bikes and design custom bikes, and it's a way to keep kids off the streets. So I know that's one of the, kind of the philanthropic things that they do. So that's just my two cents for the Brown Berets. So I I do want to answer any questions or concerns that you may have regarding some of the recent events in the nation and even locally here as far as we're talking about security for for this city and security for special events. One of the things, though, and typically I don't, I don't like scripting things out because I don't think that they sound genuine, so I typically never do that. But I just want, I just had a thing just to remind me of of what I wanted to explain, but you know, in this, in this society that we live in, our criminal justice system is really based on consequence. So people generally follow the rules because we have a free society that has consequences if you break the rules. And when we're talking about, you know, mass casualty incidents and active shooters and this type of thing, typically we're dealing with people that have mental illness. Sometimes substance abuse, but pretty much it all revolves around some type of mental illness. And the thing that's difficult in law enforcement is to keep, to keep our free society and free movement of people and and our freedoms with a segment of our population that doesn't respond to consequence. They don't, they're not motivated and they're not deterred by consequences because they have mental illness. So because of that, it's all the more important for us now to really pay attention to how we're how we're policing events by making everybody feel safe, but without it making, making it feel like we're living in a police state. You know, we have to figure out what the, what the balance is there and how we're going to all come together as a community and figure out what's acceptable here, what do people want. You know, following the the events of the Gilroy Garlic Festival, it was followed right up by the Strawberry Festival in Watsonville. And what the community wanted there is they actually had police officers walk in that festival with with rifles. That's for, that's strange to me. That doesn't feel like what we do here. That feels like what you do if you go to some foreign countries and you walk to airports and you have cops with exterior bulletproof vests and plates and and automatic weapons. But that's what, that's what the community asked for, and that's, that's what they got. And I don't know that that's always going to be that way, or if we're going to move that way as a society, but I just want to have that dialogue, all of us together. I grew up in an organization under Chief Terry Medina, and Chief Medina always instilled in us that the community allows us to police them. It's a public trust. We're we're allowed to police the community by the community members. And if we violate that trust, we're going to, we're going to lose it, and then we're not going to be able to adequately police anymore based on this kind of consequence-driven deal we have going here. So I don't know what, I'm open to whatever, whatever you want to talk about.
I have, I have a comment. Watching two, and then a third deputy joined in the antique fair, and we're walking around the whole entire time. I felt so bad for them. They were, it was rather hot to have a vest on underneath their their shirts. They walked around the whole entire day with smiles on their faces. They interacted with the vendors. They interacted with the crowd. It was a really, really nice thing to to see, the interaction between everybody.
I appreciate that feedback. I know that those three will appreciate it, too. You know, we went through a number of years here where we're, and we're still short-staffed, right? We do, we, San Juan's no different than Hollister or the county at large, and we do more with less here. And we, we were in a period of time where the deputies were kind of worn out, and it was difficult to get them to come out with all the mandatory patrol over time. It was difficult for them to take the. It was difficult for them to take the minimum, the minimal days that they had off and come and walk up and down a festival. Because it's outside of the scope, it's not something that we really can compel them to do. I was willing to compel based on the, it's conversations that we had in the meeting. I, I think that there's certain public safety implications that we can compel our staff to do certain things. But the nice thing is that we, we realized that we have another avenue of being able to staff those events. And so those three gentlemen that came down that day were retired renewants. So we had a lot of combined experience and deputies that, that get it. And I think that more and more, you know, I had four deputies immediately respond and I believe we were the first outside agency to respond to Gilroy. And our first deputies actually were, were in it. It were, I mean, they were in it in, in the inception where it was still unfolding. And I think that on, in a good way and a bad way, that did have an impact on our staff to have some empathy and some understanding as to, you know, you just never think it's gonna happen here and it happened right next door. And right before that, we had same but different, but we had the Ford Store Incident in Morgan Hill, which could have gone a lot different and, and I, I've, I've tried to walk a tight rope of not trying to take away from the spotlight that should be on the Gilroy officers that were heroic that day. But I do think it's important that, I used to work that event on, as an allied agency. And there are a, that's a heavily staffed event, it always has been, since I was, became a cop in 2000. And the Garlic Festival has always had a huge law enforcement presence, but it didn't feel that way. Typically didn't feel that way. Maybe because of the grand scale of it, but I'll tell you that I've never worked an event that was so organized and heavily staffed. And had it not been for the officers that were there, and I can't take away from the fact that, the, the fact that there were paramedics and firefighters there, staffed there, on scene, that they're just as important in the lives that were saved that day as the police officers that were there. Because had they not had immediate ENT and paramedics on scene to help those people, we would have lost more. So we need to figure out what we need to do here, but at least we, through that process, we thought of here's another thing that we have another group of law enforcement professionals that are trained and are eager to come out and interact with the public and, and do it for the right reason.
A week later, yeah, that was incredible.
And, and we need to keep, need to keep that culture going.
I, I just would like to say that we live in an age where, you know, it's so hard for any of us, for police or us to know who's out there. And so we have to be vigilant and where, where we go, we need to have, look and see what would be a, a safe way, a quick exit if something like that should happen. But it's, it's sad that we have to think about that when we go to an event. But we can't be prisoners, we have to grow up, we have to enjoy ourselves. And so, you know, we just need to be more conscious of where we are. And the other thing I was gonna ask is there any way that you could do some sort of a, a workshop or a presentation to communities on giving them ideas what to do if something like that should happen? Not necessarily in a school, but in the public, like it happened at the Gilroy Festival.
Yeah, so we've had a few over the, over a number of years and there's a different, couple of different tracks you can go down for that, but I think the best fit, the best one that I've seen and one thing that we then took over in our own office and we teach it now, was actually, it was put on by the Hollister School District, they brought people in. It was either Department of Homeland Security or FBI. I, I want to say it was Department of Homeland Security and anybody can look it up. I, I encourage you to look this up if you do a search for what's called Run, Hide, Fight. There's an actual nice video done by a professional, it's professionally done. And that's probably the best all around training that I've ever been to. It was educators, it was people from the community, it was law enforcement. And so it was so impactful and simple, in that order. Run, hide, fight. If you can run, run, if you can't run, hide, and if you're painted into a corner, you fight. And so we can provide that training to the community. We're providing that training to private, to private industry. I'm at the point right now that if anybody asks for our help in this, whether it's a private company or a school or a city, we're, we're coming and we're gonna do it. It's important. So yes, we can do that, we can have it as grand and as many people as we can get there. And we can bring it down to very small groups as well. We can do a presentation in front of the council, it's, we can make it very brief, even just with that video and, and some, some highlights from it, but it's a, it's a very impactful training and it's, you know, when we train in law enforcement, there's a thing where we, we need things that are simple enough to do at the point of exhaustion, but that are still medically feasible. That's kind of some of the current training, so you, you need to be able to defend yourself when you're at the point of exhaustion and it still has to be medically feasible to, to work, right? And so it's the same type of thing where this training can be remembered when the event's happening. There's no, there's no trickery, there's no secret formula. It's just, I, even with my own kids, I'm just always reminding them, Run, Hide, Fight, Run, Hide, Fight. So we could definitely do that, for sure.
Well again, we'd like to thank you and your department for the support they had for the Antique and Craft Fair. They were there all the time, you could see them, they were very visible. I mean, they weren't huffy and puffy, they were relaxed and, you know, talking to people, so made it real nice.
I appreciate that, I mean, it's, it's definitely something that, that I know that I've tried to really instill in the staff since I've come over here, I mean, because you do have a, a number of, of our staff that are used to rural county policing. In a rural county policing, you typically don't park your patrol car and walk up and down the street. That's what you need to do in city policing, so you know, the, it's not good enough to just park our car off to the side and sit in there on the phone and say that I worked the event. We need to be out there moving around, talking to people, making people feel safe, so we'll make sure that happens. If it doesn't happen, then I need to know about that, so we can make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming and, not wearing your uniform there, Eric. I said you looked so different without a uniform, I didn't even recognize you.
Yeah, this doesn't happen very often, so we don't get used to it.
Hey Sheriff Taylor.
All right, now we move to our act- our action items. The first action item is under 5A is consider planning commission recommendations to separate the planning commission from the Historic Resources Board. Staff report from Todd Kennedy.
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, good evening. Once again, Todd Kennedy, your city planner. I'm gonna go ahead and give a quick overview of my staff report and we do have some attendees here in the, the audience who will step up and help me out, or actually chime in, I should say. The item before you is really for discussion and consideration. Just to kind of give you a little background, over the last several months, starting in spring, there has been some discussion on planning commission about the possibility of separating the Historic Resources Board and the Planning Commission. As you probably know, that it's, it's a five member body and they wear two hats, Historic Resources and Planning Commission. Since I've been with the city, I've kind of crafted it in a way where as an item comes in and it requires historic review, it here, it gets heard by the, by the Historic Resources Board, gets recommended on the Planning Commission. And that segment of Historic Resources Board ends, has a regular agenda and it ends, moves on to Planning Commission. And as Planning Commission, they just turn their hats and they make the final motion. And I try to reflect that in my resolutions. So there's been some discussion on the, on the Planning Commission to go ahead and make that separation. They've, there's been some homework done and on April 2nd, our Chair, Scott Freels, appointed two members of the Planning Commission to, as a subcommittee, to oversee this effort and to do the research and to come back with findings. But before we got too deep into this effort, we wanted to ju- to inform the city council of what's been taking place. And to basically ask if the planning, if the city council supports it or does not, leave it the way it is and so forth. So that is pretty much like, kind of concludes my presentation tonight. The sub-members of the subcommittee are David Maderos and Shirley Brewer. And I did see Shirley Brewer in the audience, oh, and there's David right back there as well. So anyways, please excuse me. So anyway, both of them can go ahead and present to you the document that was in your staff reports, in your packets and, and discuss it a little further. So that concludes my presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioners Maderos and Brewer.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll start. Thank you Scott for that introduction. I mean Todd, I was Scott. I always, for some reason, always throw that in there. Anyway, I'll get it right one of these days. So I'm a little nervous, okay? This is, anyway, I just want to say hello to our city council and thank you for allowing us to come before you. This is Shirley Brewer, and I got that right, I hope. And I'm Dave Maderos, we both live here in town, what have you, we're both Commissioners. So I guess just briefly, this all started in discussion in, in the Historical Resource Board, Historic Resource Board meeting starting in March of this year. We decided to break up into a small group, Shirley and I. That was decided and we were appointed to do a subcommittee and that was done at the April meeting. All the while, we were still having discussions with, with, with the public since March up until then and then continued that discussion to this very day. And that discussion culminates into this letter, we thought, would be a good way to introduce ourselves and our idea. And I think if you put it in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is take the good and positive that we've had in the past and build upon that, all the good and positive things that we had when the Historic Resource Board and the Planning Commission was split at the time, came, came together at one point in time. And now we're at this point where maybe this is the opportunity to build on what we've, on the successes of the past. And with that, we put into a letter form what we think would be some of the steps and process we, we would need to take from here. And if you have any questions and Shirley, if you have something you want to add to that, go right ahead.
I think that when I was appointed to the Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission, that it seemed just almost nonproductive to me is that we would hear something from the Historic Resources Board and we would approve that and it would go on to the, to change the hats and go on to the Planning Commission to approve it. It seemed to me that there should be a separate committee that were shortchanging the city of San Juan Batista. Is that it's such a vibrant city and we have such a vibrant historic society here that it, it needs to have a little bit more focus on the Historic Resources Board to bring to the Planning Commission a lot more than what we're getting now. And that, that was kind of my rationale and I know one of the other planning commissioners had a, was afraid that things would fall through the cracks if, if we were trying to wear both hats and do things. So I think our city's growing and hopefully we have enough people that we, that could be appointed by the city council to do that. David and I felt we've kind of got as far as we can. We presented to the Planning Commission and the Historic Resources Board and we need to know whether or not you will approve us going any further, if not, then not. And if so, then we would certainly like to be a part of that process going forward to separate the two committees.
Any questions?
Not for me, but I have a comment. It was my understanding that the two were brought together because it was difficult to find people that had knowledge, historic knowledge. And so that, that was why they brought them together and it seems to me that I heard somewhere that this is a, it's, it's kind of a thing now where historical towns are combining historical, the, the historical board with Planning Commission, because there aren't enough people to be on the boards. So that, that's just a comment that I have.
I think ultimately that may be the decision that's made and we may not find five. Maybe we could change it to three. An awful lot of work was done when the committees were combined, I think about 10 years ago. And, you know, we consulted with the prior city manager as far as the extra costs and stuff that it would be and we've got the pros and cons in the letter that David put together. So you could take a look at that, we wanted to be fair to present both sides, any comments that we've had from, from the public. So it may be an issue down the road, we don't know.
I, I did, I did look at the pros and cons.
And is there, what we're asking, is there an opportunity to build on what we've done in the past? If there is that, don't we deserve at least a chance to look into it a little bit further and see if there were, we can go with this? If that's the case, we're here to help you with that, if not, let us know. I think the primary thing, if it's worthy, let's continue the discussion.
Mayor, we, we did talk, we did send an inquiry to the Historical Society and I shared their feedback with you. The three or four that responded resisted changing it, preferred the combined Planning Commission and HRB. I'm not sure, I did share the letter with them. Also, our housing element talks about our ability to streamline our permitting and, and so that was a good thing that the, the two committees were working together to avoid an extra two weeks in between processing permits.
Comments? Sure. My feeling is that the new members actually chose the position, they applied for it. Both of you were appointed. And the new procedure was to apply for it.
Actually, I was appointed before that took place.
Right. Yeah, and the, the three new people were, had applied for that position out of, I don't remember how many we had. Eight, maybe, I don't remember. My feeling is that they knew what they were getting into when they applied for the position and to, to wear both hats. I know there's some training that has to be done that might or might not have happened since we all came on board, since the new members of...
There has been some training.
And, and we might be lacking in some other training. I, I know we are for, I don't remember who it was who set it a while back, for, for funding, for grants, that we have to be licensed or certified. So I understand that there's a lot more training that has to be done or that can be done. And if we provide that, that opportunity for training, does that help alleviate having two different boards? I'm not in favor of the split myself. So if the new folks had the appropriate training and worked more closely with other groups in town.
You're not the first person that if, that I've heard that from and I think that's a legitimate concern. In my case, I have absolutely no desire to not do the job that I was appointed to do. I am very happy to continue to do what we're doing, it just seems counterproductive to me that we don't have that extra set of eyes on what's going on in San Juan Batista to apply for grants. Maybe some of the people that applied for the, that were not appointed to the Planning Commission and the Historic Resources Board might still be interested in doing that, my hope is that maybe somebody from the Historical Society might
Step up.
To, to step up to kind of guide that, you know, as we get it started. You know, that may be naive. You know, that may be naive, since somebody's shaking their head.
Shirley, come on. Never.
You know, I mean, that, to me, honest to goodness, Leslie, that is absolutely, I have no desire to not do what I was appointed to do, but I do hear your concern about that. I just think it's much more feasible to have the separation. It just doesn't make any sense to me, make it to me, and I'm going to approve it or disapprove it, and if I approve it, then it's going to go on to the city council. That just seems counterproductive to me.
And again, I don't think we want to go forward with something that's not going to work. So if it's going to be something we want to work, let's have that discussion. And if we're going to have a discussion, let's build on what's been good for the past and how we can put that into what we want in the future. So, and we're just saying we're ready for that, if you want to do that. Because the discussion came up, it was in a public meeting, and there was, there was interest, and so we want to bring it forward. And you're going to make the appointees if that comes about. So if anything, if we can help with that process, if you decide to go with it, that's, we'd be happy to do it as a Historic Resource Board and the Planning Commission, just to let you know.
Understood.
And not that we're in favor of or not, what we like or dislike. We still want to serve as we are right now and happy to do so, and, but willing to open, be open-minded to anything that we could improve on.
Got it. Thank you. Understood. Thank you very much. Thanks, Shirley.
I had a, my concern is that we're establishing another level of bureaucracy, and that does not streamline the processes, so I'm not for it.
And, and, sorry, and I didn't want to infer that, that you guys were not doing or willing to do what it is that you were appointed to do, and I apologize if I came across like that.
We did not, actually, we did not appoint any other people that raised it to, absolutely no, not taken that way off.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, we invite the public to comment. Do you have any comment from the public?
I didn't fill out a card. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I didn't fill out a card. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez, San Juan resident. I just wanted to, this is probably a question, since we have our new city manager, Mr. Reynolds, and he just came from Salinas. And I was just looking up online in the area cities that do have separate entities, and it's interesting, Salinas just, I think, started their Historic Resource Board. Can you speak to that, your experience, or any knowledge of their board as a separate entity from the Planning Commission?
That's okay.
If that's okay with the council?
It's a city of 150,000 with a list of several hundred historical resources in it, including the John Steinbeck House. One of the reasons that, I was working in community development when that program started. One of the reasons that started was, first of all, the redevelopment agency ended, and so we used to have a design review board that would review projects in the downtown for their appropriateness. The Taylor Building is designed after the Caminos Hotel, that was the influence for it, and so the history lives on. That being said, there are certain benefits that the Salinas program took moving forward under the auspices of community development that I'm not aware of, that San Juan Batistas have the resources to do, and one of those is referred to as the Mills Act, and getting that approved and adopted, so that when a business, a building owner improves their building, they're not subject to additional taxes. So there's a tax incentive there for fixing up their building. And these are pretty sophisticated programs. I don't know that we have the staff, or we haven't had a chance to fully vet and explore. So they kind of took it to a whole other level without a design review board, so it was kind of replacing that and also taking, taking the historic preservation and so forth to that height. I think it's unique to each city, and there again, it is difficult to get people on that board and getting people to meet, so it does add another layer to their approval process.
Yeah, I agree with just my input as a community member, and living here for several years and being here when there was two different boards. I feel that, you know, looking kind of in retrospect, that had to be that other layer of, you know, experts, you know, because our whole Main Street is our economic engine, along with the state park here and the Mission, which is separate, you know, the diocese, that more eyes and knowledge about historic preservation could have prevented the fiasco we had with La Casa Rosa. There are other buildings in town as well that need repair, they're in disrepair, they're definitely historical buildings. And I know that the planning commissioners, you know, they're very diligent and very happy to do their work and honored, but I just feel like that second layer of experts, and you know, yes, there are older people that maybe are, have been on the boards that are no longer, you know, able to do it, or were spreading themselves thin, but I think maybe a recall, there's a lot of new, you know, residents, and there are also individuals that maybe have a renewed interest. I, being one of them, you know, enjoy the history of our town and want to preserve it, and like a lot of us, was very upset that Casa Rosa went down the way it did. And I just feel that this other entity would maybe have more eyes on Main Street and the neighborhoods to preserve our history, and really take a look at, you know, the intricacies and how to preserve and what constitutes, you know, plant redesigning or remodeling or painting. I feel like they're two separate issues, and I really want to support Mr. Maderos and Ms. Brewer in their efforts to kind of, kind of, you know, go slow on this, and, you know, look at what they've come up with, and maybe go out there and see if there's anyone else that would want to do this, and maybe have the meetings on the same night, so they coincide. You know, the meetings right now take place because you wear one hat, take the other hat off, will coincide them, so they're here at the same time, so you don't have to, you know, have staff open up the building again, turn on the lights, all the logistics, you know, that would make sense to have that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think, looking back on what's happened in the past few years, I really think that the Historic Resource Board and the Planning Commission can probably work as one body if there is enough support. And since we've had so much turnover within our city government, that hasn't really happened, and maybe taking it a little slower as far as whether to decide to separate the two bodies to really concentrate on giving both the Planning Commission and the Resource Board more support. I know that there has been so many projects that have been overlooked, that have given, that have been given permits with conditions, and those conditions have not been met. And I think that it's not, you know, the volunteers' fault, it's that we really need to concentrate on our, on the positions of city government and to really support them, and that might give a different perspective on separating. But I really think that the bottom line is that the people that are serving right now really do need the support and follow-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment is closed. Possible action. The chair will entertain a motion whether or not the council supports separating the Planning Commission from the Historic Resources Board. Yes or no? We need a motion. Last again, is there a motion?
I make a motion not to separate the Planning Commission and the Historic Resources Board.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any, any more comments?
Well, I'm kind of in favor of what Dave said, with, which would be to let them continue studying a little bit more. At the present time, though, I agree with the majority of the council. I'm not in favor of separating them. I just, we've had issues in the past or problems in the past with finding qualified people. We have a stack of letters here from people who are qualified, and they don't want to do it, you know? Let's be really frank and honest. They don't want to do it, for whatever reason, and we have to respect that. And so, you know, we're kind of running out of people, you know, that can do it. So that leads me to, to agree with the rest of the council.
So now, the chair will attend, if there's no more discussion, will attend, call for the question, all in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The motion is to not support the separation of the Planning Commission from the Historic Resources Board.
And I, before, before you leave, I really, really do appreciate what you guys all do and the work that is involved with trying to maintain the historicness of, not a word, of, the historicness of the city. And I, and I realize it's a huge undertaking, and I, and I really do appreciate everything that you do. And if you need more support from the council or training for the commissioners or our staff, then we'll give you every tool that you need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, B, approve resolution amending purchasing policy, staff report.
Thanks, Todd. City manager. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. This is a cleanup item. After we brought forward the amendment, the recent amendments to change the city's purchasing thresholds in our ordinance, they were based on a December 2018 decision to join other cities and counties in the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which is a prescribed method for accounting, which is a standardization amongst federal and local governments for cost accounting, for recovering costs. What can you charge for, what can you not charge for, so you have salary, direct and indirect costs. So if you're working on grants and other things, there's a standard format that you would follow. After the council's last action to amend the ordinance by changing the thresholds, a member, a watchdog agency, reached out to the city manager and said, hey, we noticed that there's a required resolution that needs to be filed with the state controller before you can begin purchasing under these, under these procedures. In fact, there is an item later on the agenda that would have been allowed for the city manager to award the contract less than $100,000, but we brought it forward just because we hadn't filed this resolution yet. So all the resolution does is confirm and notify the state controller's office of our intent to follow these administrative procedures in our cost accounting process. In placing this item on the agenda, I did inquire with our finance staff and our contract CPA, and didn't see any concern trying to follow processes that we're pretty much already implementing, so.
So I have a question. Last November, I talked with Patrick Dobbins, who was a prior engineer, and he placed the item on, on the agenda, and when we voted on it, why didn't it hap, I mean, I guess I'm asking, why didn't it happen almost automatically? Why wasn't it all kind of put together?
Right.
I'm not arguing against it, I'm just asking why we're having to come back now, you know?
We didn't have a resolution. Is that it? We needed a resolution.
Well, and Patrick had seen this done in other cities. He worked for Harrison Associates, and he'd worked in other agencies, and he was trying to support our administration and our city manager, which really isn't the city engineer's forte. And I did talk to Patrick, and I got a full briefing on this whole thing, and I asked him the same question, why do I have to write the staff report? But nonetheless, the city attorney and I discussed it. We thought it was a simple matter to bring forward, just to clean this up so we could roll down that path.
Okay.
Just another second.
Any other discussion? Discussion? Public comment? We open a public comment on the purchasing policy. If there's no public comment, we'll close the public comment period. Possible action, motion to approve resolution 2019, electing to be subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedure set forth in the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, and directing the city manager to notify the state controller of this election. Let's then, the chair will entertain a motion.
I so move.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
C, approve a policy for stopping procedures and timeliness for council meeting agenda management.
Trish?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You have before you a policy on proposing for, for procedures in agenda management for staff to follow and guidelines for council for placing items on the agenda, and goes a little further for, with timelines that staff can probably, can work under and meet the requirements for posting. Do you have any questions? It goes as our city manager brought to me a buddy system. Two people can come to the city manager and the mayor and, two council members, excuse me, and suggest an item on the agenda, as long as, you know, one brings it, the other supports it, then it can be placed on the agenda.
I do have a question.
Just, you know, feel it very out there. The background from this, from time to time, the city clerk's office receives requests from the public to place an item on the agenda. Additionally, council members are unclear of the process, and absent a policy, staff advises how it's always done, been done, so. Staff feels there's a need for a policy to stipulate timeliness for staff, contractors, and the council to submit materials to the agenda packet. The policy should also address who is authorized to place items on the agenda and reference the government code section relevant to posing a special meeting. Staff develop detached policy after researching other cities' agenda policies and request council review and approval.
Thank you.
Now.
Okay. Have we had a problem with that before in the past? Where a council member that is not the mayor wants to put something on the agenda?
I think that the, my experience is that the city manager will get emails from a city, one city council member, and perhaps list items they want on the agenda. Always, normally, it'll start as a discussion, put it under discussion, not under action, so that the council can discuss it together, determine whether they want to take action, and then it will go forth to another meeting.
Because I do have a problem with this. I can't understand why I would have to, in writing, contact another council member in order to get an item put on the agenda. So then if I have no support from St. John, then I need to go to either Leslie or Sessa. Am I, am I not violating the Brown Act?
Uh huh.
Because I, so I, you know, I don't know, I don't like that part. I can understand the, the policy, you wanting to pass a policy, but that, I think, needs to be removed.
Okay. Then I think that they would, two council members would have to come before the, together before the city manager.
Right. So, so Trish and I worked on this together, and I've seen it in practice. For example, during council comments, someone might say, I think we should consider a ban on plastics, and another council member at the same meeting says, I'll be your buddy on that one. And that's, and then, so it's not in writing. If it's in the public meeting, it's in the public discourse. So maybe we could soften this by considering...
And that is one of the, I did list three ways that they could, by sending something in writing to the city manager, or making, just as he described, and a third one is, well, if a member of the public was at a goal-setting meeting that the council was having, and, you know, it's a public meeting, so the public would be there as well and might bring something forth that I'm sure that they're suggesting the council make as their goal for the year. So that's for the public.
I, I, maybe it's late, I'm tired. Explain that again. I didn't quite understand what you're talking about.
It's right there on your list.
Yes, there's three ways. I'll admit that the last one was more for the public to bring it forth in a, you know, a public meeting, that they express their... know, a public meeting, that they express their desire that city council address, you know, parking in the city. Make that their, their project for the, the year. And then the council can decide if they want to make that their goal together and discuss it at further meetings. But other than that, yes, it does state that it be in writing, I, that might be, I, I picked this up from the city Cupertino, and I think that that's because we're in the age of emails, and that way they can go back and forth and, and get interest from another council member to buy, buy into it, to put it on the agenda. If it's one person, I think you're just, that sends an email and says, put this on the agenda, I've, I've seen it, that it's on the agenda and it just dies. There's other council members saying, no, I'm not interested in moving forward with this. And you've kind of wasted some time of a lot of people. Especially if the staff has to put together staff reports and gather information and research it, you know, even put together a resolution. It's all in a matter of utilization of staff time and, and resources.
So I was just going to add, last night, as I was studying through this, I, I got a little bored, and so I turned on the Hollister City Council meeting, which is always quite exciting. And at the end of the council meeting, as you just said, Ms. Reynolds, they, several of the city council people said, will you, I would like to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, you know, and they asked the others on the city council to join in in, in putting that on. And so, that, that's how they kind of worked through that, you know, it didn't seem to be, no one yelled Brown Act violation, but, you know.
But that's during the confines of the meeting, though, and I, and I absolutely get, get Mary's, what Mary is asking. I asked for something to be put on the agenda, the city manager, and I had a discussion about it and decided to pull it. I went to, to the city manager directly and asked if we can put it on there, and we had a conversation about it and decided it was okay to pull. As opposed to going to at least one city council member and saying, hey, will you jump on board with this? And if that other city council member doesn't, then I have to go to somebody else, which then in turn, because this is near and dear to my heart, so I want buy-in, which in turn we have a Brown Act violation. So my question is, to, to add on to Mary's, if my understanding is correct, if a city council member, along with the city manager, have a discussion, and if it's outside the confines of a meeting, if we could have a discussion and decide whether it's appropriate? And
Sure.
And maybe if it's
Sure, that's, that's fair, we can do that. And I do try and meet with the mayor and go through the agenda before, in time. One of, one of the, this is, this is more than just how to put something on the agenda, it's, it's trying to get a calendar for us, so we know that if you want something on the agenda, you have until this date to submit it, otherwise it has to wait.
Right, definitely a calendar.
And that is, we need to, that is really one of my biggest hopes for this policy, is the sort of structure.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
And I don't have a problem with that, but I don't, I don't, I don't, see how I can do this. I would rather come to you, talk to you, and, and then we put it on that way.
Well, we can, we can amend it and bring it back, maybe under consent.
Yeah.
But we're going to go forward with the calendar, if that's okay.
Calendar is a great idea, absolutely.
And for, for example,
Has to be deadlines.
The, the city planning committee on their parks master plan, it's, it's not really important to me, although it is really important to me, it's really important to the community in total. And yet, it's not on the agenda, even though we knew about it a week and a half ago, because I didn't think it was, we need, the city manager needs to digest it first, and, and we, we needed to kind of figure out a, a course of action. And I'm not going to let it fall or drop, it's just be next month or the, you know, or very soon.
And so the mayor and I are working on a balanced agenda that emphasizes quality of conversation versus quantity.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Eight o'clock, absolutely. Yeah, no, I totally get that, I totally get that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so where, where do we proceed with this?
So would we amend it, or?
No, we can table it until the next meeting.
Table it until next meeting?
Sure.
But keep in mind our timeline, I mean, our
Appreciate that, yes.
calendaring of
Thank you, Trish, for your research.
Are you okay with that?
Thanks, Trish.
Okay, we'll table it for next meeting. Okay. Okay. D, award a contract for installation of speed tables on Fourth Street to Granite Rock Company.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Prior to his leaving, the former acting city manager put this project out to bid. The design, the location of the tables was all agreed upon, and we received two bid results, and Granite Rock had the lowest bid, and we hadn't quite had an, an agreement together in time for our deadlines, missing our own calendar. So I used the estimate of $65,000. We have since provided an agreement to the council and, and a resolution that shows that it's 63,200. We had $80,000 budgeted in our last fiscal year, which we did not use, so we carry the CIPs forward into the current fiscal year. And what this states suggests is that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Granite Rock to initiate construction of the speed tables on Fourth Street at last. And coincidentally, it looks like Granite Rock can do that after the 150th anniversary celebration, so September 9th to 10th is our target.
I have a question. When will we consider the item that was brought up about the crosswalks, the school crosswalks, their tables?
I, I made a note to research that, and if it seems appropriate, we could ask for an ad alternate for the bid and maybe add a couple thousand dollars worth of work onto this. I just want to confirm that we've reached out to the community, that the community agrees. All that was done leading up to this, so I don't want to surprise someone with an instant raised crosswalk. I believe the one with, it just helped me out here, it's just, or I could ask, the, the two crosswalks that were mentioned, one is by
Vertigo, basically.
Vertigo, right?
Vertigo Cross and in the school.
Okay, good, okay. So I can follow up on that as we move forward, and we can add that as a change order if it's not significant, not much.
Great. Any further discussion?
And that it was approved by the planning commission and the historic resources board.
This matter or the other sidewalk?
The other two.
The other two.
By the school.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
But if that's, if that's a raised crosswalk, that in essence becomes a speed bumper, a speed table, which would eliminate possibly the need for another one 50 feet down the road. It just, at that point, sequential speed bumps within arms lengths of each other doesn't really make any sense.
No, it doesn't. It becomes a roller coaster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're in different streets, right? These, this is, this is Fourth Street?
No, we're talking about Fourth Street, Fourth Street going, right there, Vertigo and the post office.
Okay, so I'll have to compare that.
Third and Fourth.
Okay. Let me, let me get with our city engineer, he has my file on this project.
And maybe I'm misunderstanding a raised crosswalk. I'm thinking a raised
No, no, it's a table.
No, no.
It's raised about this high.
It's a ta, it's a speed table.
It becomes a speed bumper, a speed table.
Okay. So then I take back what I just said, I'm thinking a, a raised walk, like in Casterville, going over
That's $10 million.
That's why I'm like, $2,000, what is that?
If you have used or been at the airport lately in San Jose, you'll notice that all the crosswalks
All the crosswalks are
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Which is fabulous. Yeah, it does work.
I, I have a question. Do you have any idea how long it'll take to, to install them?
Less than a week, I'm told.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
A day?
Well, there's striping and other things.
Oh, yeah, there's striping, sorry.
All right. Any other discussion?
And public comment?
Yes, now we go to public comment.
Tony Bach?
First thing I want to do is thank Trish for making the thing, I wanted to talk about the last item on here, Tinda. I think, you've answered your question, I was curious about the locations. This project, you might say, has been ongoing for, ever since Fourth Street got repaid. And about once a month, my wife says, when are you going to get speed bumps on? I spent eight years on the council, never accomplished. But, and, and I, I talked to Don about it. Where we were thinking about one, actually, it came down to Michelle and I. There'd be one speed hump at Tooluma Street, there's a crosswalk right there, and that crosswalk was put in because people going to the theater would be parking up on Tooluma Street, and it was kind of dangerous for them. And the second one was at Polk, by the ballpark, and there's a crosswalk there. And I've always thought, I don't know how a kid hasn't gotten hit there. You know, little league, they get all excited, they get, eat a candy bar or whatever, and they run uptown, they don't look. The third one, we thought would be appropriate at Mariposa Street. And then the fourth one is the Vertigo. And there again, you got kids coming across from, they get out of school, and they're going to the windmill or whatever, and, and you got a lot of kids going across that. But we didn't make any provision on Third Street, and I think it would really be a good idea because if you ever spend any time up there, people come off of the highway, and, I mean, they're flat, flying. They're going up Third Street, or they swing and go across Fourth Street. And, and one of the things that, when we talked about it, we wanted a space amount enough so that they could get up to speed and get airborne when they hit the, you know, because, I mean, there was a traffic study done here, I don't know how many years ago, and the city, the engineer said, oh, no, you don't need speed bumps, it, average speed is 26 miles an hour. And I told him, basically, that it was full of it, and you come and sit in my front yard and watch these clowns. And so, like I said, any agenda, it didn't really define where they were, but I hope that's about where they're going to be. And you have to put warning signs up too, right?
Yes, it's in the contract.
It's in the spec.
Yeah.
Yes, after we spoke, I, I meant, when I said engineering, that's the first thing he did, was go out and verify the location, so, yes, things have not changed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Tony, just FYI, the city manager and I, we got, we went to see Manny over there. He raised all kinds of hell. So anyway, we went over to, you know, torn him down, and while we were standing there in the corner, there were seven instances of people that just, they didn't even stop, they come to the stop sign, roll right on through and keep on going.
You know, I kind of overlooked that, but at one time, did think about that, was on Monterey Street, putting, let's see how to describe, if you're looking at Monterey Street on Fourth Street on the right hand side, if you put a speed bump along there, that would force those people to stop.
That's exactly what we thought.
Right, so instead of three, we have four, yeah.
We got you, we got you covered.
So I'd go home and tell my wife we're going to have speed bumps by September 15th.
If it doesn't rain.
I like that, if it doesn't rain, I love that.
Exactly what she said.
Never too soon, Mary, never too soon.
Oh, yeah, they're going to put it all, all long enough where it's going to rain.
Weather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Any, any other public comment?
Want one in front of my house.
Okay, first of all, talking about the raised crosswalks, I think the Alameda starts from Franklin, past 156. So it's not, technically, it's not Third Street, it's the Alameda. You guys were saying Third Street, so to be clear, it's the Alameda. That would be the two raised crosswalks for the kids or pedestrians there at Vertigo and the Alameda. At the May meeting, I asked when the tables would be installed on Fourth Street, and I was told in July. As Tony has said, this has been going on for years and years and years. The speed on that street, on Fourth Street, is incredible. The day of the flea market, there was an SUV hauling, an SUV, just tearing down Fourth Street on the day of the flea market. Did I hear September? That's not acceptable to the residents of Fourth Street. We need to get that done sooner. As far as where the tables are situated by what Tony said, the last one would be on Mariposa to Vertigo, okay? That's what I understood, putting the speed table on Mariposa, and then there isn't anything going towards Vertigo till you get to the raised crosswalk, right?
Stop sign.
Well, nobody sees that stop sign.
I know.
And after that stop sign, they just tear to the next stop sign on the Alameda. So I think something has to be done between Mariposa, after Mariposa, towards Vertigo, towards the Alameda, because they, if, I mean, they just, it, it's, I'm right there in the middle, so I know that coming up, coming out of my driveway, I have to be very, very careful, because, yeah, there is a stop sign there, but they're coming so fast, it's not funny. So I think you have to look at these again, and I don't understand why it takes till September to start on this work. I really want it to start before that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Any other public comment? If not, we close the public comment period. We go to possible action. Possible action, motion to approve resolution 2019, authorizing a contract with Granite Rock for installation of speed tables on Fourth Street.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one is to look at the other, adding
Location?
Adding the other two, on the Alameda and Vertigo.
Anyone else? John, do you have any comments?
No, no, just
Okay, well, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution, authorizing a contract with Granite Rock for installation of speed tables on Fourth Street. All in favor, respond by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that includes all our, all our action items, now we go to discussion items. We have, this year, the, I guess it's the foundation, Samuel County, has a National Philanthropy Day every year, and this year, they're, they're asking for an honoree to be youth. So what we need is submissions of youth names that we can consider for this. Somebody approached me and they had mentioned Xavier Waracha. Okay? They mentioned his name, and I'm not familiar with him, but he comes very well recommended. So it's, I guess we can just
Well, until September, the, the idea of this discussion item was to get people thinking about it and to encourage the middles in time for September recommendation.
I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll find out, or we can find out what the deadline is for submission of the names to the foundation, and that way we can move on.
I have to have it by September, you, you can make your vote by September, so I can get working on it. October's too late because
Right.
They want the reservations paid for. October's too late because they want the reservations paid for and names and scripts and.
So can, we'll make the decision in September or we got, the submissions still win? We need a cutoff date for submissions.
At the September meeting.
September council meeting is fine.
All right, cool.
Is there an adult?
Pardon?
Is there an adult that they have selected?
No, this year's youth.
It's just youth?
Just youth.
Well, youth organizations is what it says on the second page.
I've been recognized a couple of times on that thing, you know, it's youth this time.
But youth doing a great job. Let's promote them at this event.
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely. 6B, transient occupancy tax on short-term rentals. The TOT for the Airbnb.
I tried to use all the acronyms I possibly could, just to confuse you. But at the last meeting, Councilmember Freeman asked me to take a look at whether the city could adopt a TOT tax for short-term residents. And what those are, are people that rent on, say, Airbnb or similar establishments. And so what I discovered is that you can legally do it. I looked at your TOT tax and it supports you doing it on short-term rentals, pretty much included in the definition. So I went ahead and, based on a recent case, that the court approved the STR ordinance, said it was legal and fine. So I just took basically that ordinance and I drafted it for your city. It's going to go in the finance code, right under the TOT section, the way this is drafted. And I will say, this is about as simple as you can get for a TOT on a STR. You might read in the paper that a lot of other cities are being sued or they are having multiple council meetings. And that's because they try to regulate the STRs, either put a lot of rules on them or limit the number. And this does not limit, this does not regulate. All it is, is that a person that has an STR will come to the city, go up to the counter and say, can I have a permit to operate a STR? And the city will give a permit to the STR, you know, check business license, et cetera, but give it, give a permit. And then they'll compile a list and they'll submit the list to Airbnb or the other providers. And those providers will collect the tax. So based on that little amount of work that the city has to do, they will get a check from these people. Your TOT is quite high here, so it should raise you at least a little bit of revenue. So that's it in a bucket. And the, what I really want to know is, do you want to start this at the Planning Commission? Because a lot of cities do it at the Planning Commission because it's something that people need to sink in about. And maybe some of the neighbors, it'll bring up some issues. Well, is that operating on my street? I don't want it there. I don't want to talk to you about that. So there tends to be a lot of community involvement on this issue. So the, so I just, we can start at the Planning Commission. It doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission. But I know we've had this discussion earlier that the city council sometimes wants to use the Planning Commission to vet these hard issues. So that would be the issue. Bring it back on your agenda or take it to the Planning Commission. Or of course, we can change the form or do something different.
So I've heard a lot about the controversy. I know the city of Pacific Grove down by where, they, I believe, tried to limit the number of.
Yes.
You know, and, you know, it caused quite a controversy with the people who owned short-term rentals. Yeah, so I never was trying to regulate short-term rentals. If anyone out there has a short-term rental, God bless you, I just want you to send a check for 10% to the city. And you add that on to, you know, to the total of their bill. You know, it's just another, we have a lot of unmet needs of the, you know, the water pipe that's on Don's desk that everyone's talking about. The cost of replacing those is going to be significant, beyond significant. You know, and maybe I'm just kind of a wishful thinker, but to me, every dime, every dollar helps, you know? And that's all I'm trying to do. I don't think it's controversial in this city yet. If we want it sent to the Planning Commission, I'm fine with that. I mean, I have, you know. But I'm also fine with voting on it in a couple of months or whatever.
Yeah, I think it'll help, you know, every little bit helps.
Every little bit helps.
All right, that concludes our discussion items, and now we go to comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't get direction. Should we take this to the Planning Commission or? Are you okay with this basic format and ready to put it to the Planning Commission to?
Yeah.
Is there public comment on the side of my?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, my last sandbox. Good evening, everybody. Once again, Jackie Morris Lopez. I actually put this bug in Councilwoman Freeman's ears several months ago because I had noticed that there were some Airbnbs popping up in my neighborhood. There's a couple. There's a house next door. I feel that, you know, all the power to them. They want to be a small business owner. They need to follow the same rules that everybody else in town that puts up a shingle and opens up a business. Whether it's a standard brick and mortar, online business, it's a business, okay? The people that live next door to our property are very, very nice people. They have very, very nice dwellings. My in-laws that come in from Utah, Salt Lake City, have stayed there a couple of times. Other relatives from Oregon. It's a cool place to go hang out. It's not a hotel. But I think they need to follow the rules, and it's another way for San Juan to get some income. Now, one thing comes with it, the caveat, is that there are, you know, there's new homes. Maybe they've got five bedrooms. I can see that maybe they want a short-term rental. There's a lot of festivities in the area, you know, car show week just ended, you know, all the other festivities. So I think it's a really nice thing, but we need to capitalize on it, but we also need oversight. Oversight meaning that if there's a structure that was a garage and now it's being turned into a bedroom, you need to be on top of that. And I know of one in particular that that occurred. And I don't know, you just need to be on top of it and be aware what sort of things can take place with it. They do have the Airbnb strict guidelines. I think it was, it was really a wise thing that our attorney did look into it and simplifying it. I don't know that taking it to the Planning Commission really is necessary. I don't, I don't know what that other layer of bureaucracy would entail if there's already a guideline from our attorney that is pretty straightforward. But I'm for it to regulate it. I don't know about limiting the number at this point, but certainly collecting the tax and making sure that if they are going to renovate an out dwelling, that they follow the standard permits attained for that. Thank you.
Ergo, the Planning Commission.
And I'm sorry, the only way that you're going to know that is if they apply for the license and you have the questionnaire. Are you converting a garage and converting?
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead, Rachel.
I'm out for this. I didn't realize that there, we had.
We do.
Oh, no.
I didn't know that. But my question is, how will you enforce it? You're leaving it up to people to come in of their own will and declare this. So how do you enforce it? And we talked about the, well, anyway, I mentioned the Planning Commission needing more enforcement. I mean, they didn't get a lot of support in following the conditions of permits that they issued. So how do you enforce this?
May I, Mr. Mayor?
I'm in the meeting, brother. I'll call you later.
May I address that?
Say yes.
Yes.
So if you look at the ordinance, the way it's drafted, that people cannot sign up for Airbnb or VRBO unless they are on the city list. So those providers will monitor that. And then it also provides in the ordinance that the owner is personally responsible. So in the case of somebody, say, was on Craigslist or some group that wasn't monitoring this on the city's behalf, then the city could, you know, run a check on the internet, say, once a month or so, and see, make sure that no one else is advertising out there on the different mediums.
And I know that, I believe, at least with the case of Airbnb, certain cities, not every city, I don't think, because it's kind of still, as the city attorney has stated, kind of in flux or sorting its way through. But Airbnb does make direct payments to the city. I mean, because the way you do it on Airbnb is you have the app on your phone and you've entered all your information, including credit card information, you know? And so you literally flip through the sites and you go, oh, I like this one. And you press it and it comes back and tells you, yes, it's available or no, it's not. And then you press it again, yes, I'll take it. And it's charged to Airbnb wherever they're at, San Francisco or wherever. Yeah, and then they literally send the check to the city. So that's pretty, that's the way I'd like to see it because I think that's the best, easiest way. Alls we have to do is literally collect the check in the mail and cash the check, you know? Thank you. Pick the money and run.
Any other comments from city council? How about city manager?
No. I counted four last night, and they average about 140 a night. I was just running the numbers, you know, and wanted to know if we could staff it. So right now, we don't need to limit the number. There's only four.
Okay, comments from our city attorney?
Yes, I unfortunately have a brief comment. At the last meeting, Vice Mayor Edge asked me to look into the issue of maintaining the exteriors of buildings and buildings that were dilapidated. And you actually have a pretty comprehensive, chapter 5-8 is on property maintenance of the city code. And the city can prosecute as nuisance, vacant buildings, paint on buildings, graffiti on buildings, unattended vegetation, blighted building conditions, et cetera. So it's a code enforcement issue. And I talked to the city manager about it, and he said that this would be better handled by staff since they can report to you on how code enforcement is taking place. And with him being new, you know, you might want to give him directions on code enforcement and how that should be brought forward into the future. So he said he was going to put it on the agenda as a staff, code enforcement and staff issue rather than have me report further on this issue to you.
So to that end, tomorrow, I'm meeting with Fourleaf to talk about enforcement of our building codes and our plan check process. I'm trying to get up to speed on all of our contractors. I'll let you know, I did not see code enforcement in the budget. So that'll be our first challenge, is how do we pay for someone to do this? I did recently meet a retired code enforcement officer who might be willing to come on and help. So I need time to figure out how we pay for that and make it functional before I bring it back.
And that's not part of Fourleaf's contract?
I don't believe so, but I'm going to find out for sure tomorrow at 11:00.
Okay.
All right. Yes?
I have a question.
Question?
Were you able to find out about the man with the boarded houses, the boarded windows on his house?
As I read through the nuisance ordinance, I asked myself that same question. And vacancy, it's, you said, more than a year? Yeah, so I, we might have some teeth there that we could use. Each one will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, of course.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Motion carries.
Thank you all for coming and your participation.
Thank you.